All right, it's past seven o'clock, so let's start the meeting. This is the December fourteenth meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. Welcome, everybody. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the special Town Council meeting minutes of November twenty-fifth. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move, Coker.
Do I hear a second?
Second, John Wall.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I believe, I didn't take attendance, but I think we have everybody but Nick. Is Nick here? No, okay. I think everybody else is here. Sorry, I screwed that up. Let me make sure everybody gets in, who wants to get in, the waiting room is... Okay. Every time I think I'm ready to go, it's somebody else comes. All right, so for opening remarks, usually I don't have opening remarks, but tonight I do. The Town Council has received the formal resignation from Nick Meyer from the Town Council. My understanding is Nick's had increasing work and family demands and has just caused him not to be able to continue to serve. As a consequence, the Town Council is going to need to have to find someone to replace Nick. We also have two members of the BZA whose terms have ended, Mike Gorman and Rich Gersich, and two members of the APC whose terms are up and either and both, all three of the, all four of these folks can either be replaced or reappointed. And on the APC, it's Seth
McCormick?
McCormick and Nick Meyer, who resigned from the Town Council. Also, Nick Meyer was on both the Police and Fire Commission and will have to be replaced. So, given that, I would suggest that anybody who's interested in serving in any of those positions, send an email to me, that would be lbplamey@gmail.com. Send that with your resume or CV, or just send me your name, whatever your preference is, and let us know which position you might be interested in. We also have a number of other committees that have what are described as annual reappointments. I think the best way to handle that would be that anybody who's serving on any of those committees now, who is no longer interested in serving, if you could let me know, and then we can get the word out, so that if people are interested in serving on those, we can get that out. We'll put all this information that I've just shared with you on the website, so that people can see exactly what's available, and hopefully then next month, the Town Council can figure out who is to be reappointed, who is to be replaced. Some of these positions are presidential appointments, some of them are appointments of the Town Council. One of the positions, the APC Commission, or BZA, one of the BZA positions that's open is actually appointed by the Advisory Plan Commission. And it has to be an Advisory Plan Commission member appointed by the Advisory Plan Commission. So, anybody who's listening, spread the word, and we'll get it on the website too, and then hopefully get me your names and whatever else you want to send me, and we'll try and get that dealt with, hopefully at the next meeting.
You mean the meeting, the year-end meeting, Bob, or no?
Well, we could do it by the year-end meeting, or we could do it at the January meeting of the Town Council. Either one would be fine with me, if somebody has a strong preference, we can deal with it. Anybody on the Town Council have any problems with my proposal as to how to deal with the openings?
Yeah, I think they should be open to everybody in the community, and hopefully we'll get a large number of people that want to get involved in town government. The more we have, the better, the more ideas we have, the better, I think.
Yep, we have a lot of expertise out there. I think you're absolutely right. Any other comments? Okay. Police Department report, Chief.
For the month of November 2020, total dispatch calls is one hundred and forty-six. Miles on patrol was three thousand five hundred and two. Hours worked was seven hundred and forty-nine and a half. Overtime was twenty-two hours, and that was for training. Reserves were twenty-nine and a half hours. There was twenty traffic stops along Beach, three citations, seventeen verbal warnings. Eleven suspicious subjects were checked, one suspicious vehicle, sixteen courtesy services, three ordinance violations were checked, one ordinance citation. There's nineteen alarms for the month. Two accident reports, crash reports. My other reports was we had euthanized a deer that was stuck in a fence. And two domestic batteries, one domestic battery was turned over to the prosecutor's office for a warrant request. That's it for the month.
Any questions? Police Commission report, that's got Nick Meyer's name behind it. Anybody on the Police Commission on this meeting able to give us a report on that? If not, we'll move on to the next one.
We just, we had a very brief meeting. It was some vacations and some other things, so there were really only a couple of us there. We basically just kind of postponed things until the next Police Commission meeting. As everybody's aware, you know, Bobby's retiring, and we're we're in the throes of the transition with the new chief. And so that's, that's really the major operation in the next thirty days.
Cool. Volunteer Fire Department report, John?
Well, I'll give you two sets of numbers. One will be the month of November, and then I'll also touch on the annual numbers as it's December already. Fire calls for the month of November were two. Year-to-date calls, fire calls were forty-eight. Thirty of those were false alarms, so the average turnout per call is nine, but false alarm calls, we don't generate a huge turnout, so if you look at the actual breakdown for the annual numbers, there's, there were five actual fires. Rubbish fire, one, a couple of grass fires, some hazardous weight, or hazardous condition calls, carbon monoxide and the like, some good intent calls, and thirty false alarms. On the medical side, month of November, we had five calls. There was a respiratory call, three sick people and a liposis. On the annual numbers, there are seventy-seven in total. Average turnout of medical calls is six. Response times for fire calls is right at five minutes, and for medical calls is a little over four minutes. We had a total of about twenty-three hundred hours in total for the year.
Okay, any questions? Fire Commission report, John?
Yeah, I've got a few items to run through. We have an officers' meeting every month, generally speaking, and we met this past month, and then we plan on meeting on the sixth of January as well. We're looking at the station remodeling, trying to revisit that program. You know, we may have some limitations based on town debt limits and that sort of thing, but we want to keep that ball in play, so we're pushing that a little harder now, trying to get a little more information in, and as John Coker knows, we're trying to get a second number, second set of numbers on the proposals, and maybe trim it back, so we can have it a little more manageable from the financial side. We also have a committee that meets on the contract. You may or may not know, the contract's about ten years old, the contract with the town of Long Beach. In other words, the Fire Department has a contract with the town. I think I saw it on the agenda earlier. We had a meeting scheduled for the fourth of January to review that with our Fire Department Executive Group, and then we'll, we'll make a proposal to the town. I think I mentioned to the Budget Committee, you know, since we don't have Doolin Fire money to split anymore, we've been at a deficit this year, so we'd like to propose increasing the contract amount for the town, but we'll make a formal proposal at the point where we bring that to the Town Council. I think we, we'd mentioned at the Budget Meeting, we'd like to get somewhere above thirty-five K if we can to make things work out, so that would just be a slight increase when you look at a ten-year duration on that current contract. I'd like to make a little pitch for the website. We've tried to dress up our website. We've had a Fireman of the Month presented on the website every month. That's kind of a new thing for us. We're trying to do more public service announcements, so that people can understand a little more about what we do and what our expectations are, numbers on the houses and that sort of thing. We also are able to take donations now through a PayPal account on our website, which is a brand-new development. We're kind of hoping at the end of the year here, we can kind of generate some interest with that. It'll just make it easier for people. We're very grateful for the donations that we've enjoyed over the years and want to continue that program, and we're just trying to make it a little easier. We did cancel our Christmas party in view of the COVID. We generally get together one, you know, at the Christmas time for the significant others and spouses, and have a very nice Christmas party, but we canceled it this year based on the COVID. Just want to reiterate again for the, you know, the community, we've had some deaths in the community. The COVID protocols from the county are still tight, meaning we have very specific things we're required to do when we find out, you know, the 911 dispatcher. Don't get frustrated if you have a medical call, because they will ask you some questions. It's a screening process to make sure whether or not you have a COVID situation in your in the home or wherever we're going to go to respond. And then in the event that they answer the questions and the positive, then it's very specific about what the county medical wants us to do. They have all kinds of PPE required, and then our whole protocol changes, so there may be a little bit of delay if you actually have a COVID situation in the response time, and also the way that response comes in. Mark Swistick's been working with PPE from the county. We're trying to, you know, replenish our stocks on the police side and our side, and even with the Street Department on some personal protective gear for the COVID situation. And then we're in the throes of our annual proficiency test. That's something we do every year. Everybody has to pass that. We have a practical portion, which is going to happen. They're actually doing some of that tonight. If you came by the Fire Department tonight, you'd see some of that going on. We changed it around a little bit this year, and again, in the interest of COVID, we're going to do the written portion in January, and we're doing the practical portion last week and this week, so that's all I have on the Fire Department.
Mr. President?
Yes?
A couple of things on the Police Commission side that I don't see it on the agenda. The contracts for Doolin Beach, Michigan Shores expire in January, the end of January 2021. We met, we represented us from both communities. We were at our Police Commission meeting, and we discussed what the thoughts would be for the upcoming two contracts, which is a three percent increase each year for each community. Doolin Beach has already returned me a signed contract for the next three years with the three percent increases. Michigan Shores is requesting a copy of that also, so they can either approve it at their next meeting, their last meeting of the year coming up later this month, or in January at their council meeting.
Good.
And one other thing, I've been in contact with Chris Willoughby. I think he's sent out something for payments for our copies of our videotapes for our body cams. That needs to see some attention tonight also.
Is that, is that on the agenda, or no?
No, I didn't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't see it either. Chief Sokowski, just by way of reminder, I sent that in inquiring as whether the town wanted to entertain, and I think Chief had encountered for the first time with these body cams a request, and these things have costs associated with them, and under the statutes, the town actually has to adopt an ordinance, and most municipalities have them, so you know, whether you're in a position to do that tonight, or at the January meeting, you know, Chief Sokowski did reach out. I don't know if anybody recalls or not, but you know, I passed that along, but it is something that you guys should consider. And certainly it's suggested by Chief. I'm actually frankly surprised it's never come up before, but it really is something that should get attention and be adopted at some point, whatever you determine those fees to be, but it is clear that the council has to adopt an ordinance.
Bob, didn't you, can you give me an idea of what, or give us an idea of what what the Michigan City and others, and Mark Swistick could probably do that too, but yeah.
It's basically, I think what Chris did was kind of pretty much mirror what Michigan City's doing, which is what everybody else is doing with the same fee amounts, so it would be, it would be the same as what everybody else is doing.
Okay. Okay, so maybe Bob, you and Mark can come up with some suggestions as to what those fees maybe ought to be, and we can then put that in the form of an ordinance?
Well, we, we have that, so that's floating out there for it, so Chief actually had a a draft of that, so I guess I will circle back and suggest with Bill. Bill is kind of the gatekeeper along with the Police Department when those requests come in of the copies, et cetera, so there is a form out there, and there are suggestions of the fee spend.
Okay. So that has already been sent out to everybody. I don't recall seeing it, but just because I don't remember doesn't mean it didn't happen. I guess let's, why don't we make sure that's on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can give that due consideration?
Bob, what do you want on the next agenda, just so I can make a record of it?
You can just call it a copying fee ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe.
Or the police king, yeah.
Well, it's not just, it's, actually, we'll cover everything, but it came up because Chief Sokowski experienced, I think Chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, that for the first time, because the body cams are in effect, and somebody wanting a digital copy of it.
Correct. We've always had in-car videos. We've gotten very few, very few requests for copies of. Most of the time, it's for defense attorneys, and we wouldn't charge that, because they could get it through discovery anyway, so. But we did have an occasion for a request, and I looked, and I thought it was in place, and it's not, so why we're doing this.
So we'll review that, make sure it's on for the next meeting. Anything else, Chief?
No, just the two contracts, that was it.
All right, Street Department report, Tom Doll? We have Tom out there?
I think Tom's here. Oh, is he? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. For the month of November, we cleaned up most of the town parks, the leaves. The pickup is done, and we had enough time to run the street sweeper around, try to do a little bit of cleanup, make everything look pretty good. Plow trucks are all set up and ready to go, so we're just kind of waiting for the next thing to happen.
One other comment would be that the the paving is complete, and Bill's handling the invoicing. I think he's going to talk about that in the finances. And again, Tom mentioned the leaves are all complete. I think they did a great job. We were lucky at all, that all dropped in short order, and we had our little extra time to get things done, and I applaud all the guys. They did a great job.
Okay. Street Commission report, John?
Uh, I think, okay. Well, that pretty much does it.
That was it.
Community grant paving project is complete, the invoicing is in, leaves are complete, Tom's got his salt salt order placed. I think he's in good shape on salt this year, and then the plowing's starting soon.
Okay.
We, you know, we, we made a decision at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that we were going to hold off on applying for the CCMG program for next year. We may revisit that by the end of the year meeting. We've got some information. We're trying to assemble to make the case to maybe continue that, but that'll be a little bit dependent on finances, so.
Okay. Park Board, John Coker?
Yeah, Zach's on here. Zach, do you want to give the report, or I can?
Actually, John, you can give it. I haven't gotten a copy of that yet.
Okay, well, it's a pretty short report. They have, after their last meeting, discussion was held concerning the toders. That's still an ongoing subject matter for many people, and anyway, the park board, they're going to restart, start removing the toders as soon as the contractor schedule permits. Cottonwood trees at Stop 16 were trimmed and inspected. Park Board's pursuing the idea of turning half the tennis court space into four pickleball courts. Pickleboard, pickleball is becoming a pretty popular activity around here, and you know, that'd be a good use of the courts, because they don't get used as much as they possibly have in the past, so that's basically what went on. It wasn't a long meeting, so that's all we have there. Community Center report, I don't think Community Center boards met. I know that's going to be discussed a little bit later in the Bob on the
As the executive order?
Right.
Right.
Okay. So that's it. Last, Zach's got something else to say.
No, sir, for a change, I'm good.
Okay.
John, I think Zach could comment that the Fire Department's already setting up the ice rink, and that's part of, I would say, the Park Department. Looks pretty good.
Well, I need some cold weather to have some ice.
Well, that's true.
Just, just to I should all the help with that. It looks great.
Yeah, it does. It looks great.
Thank you, Mary Lou, on behalf of Bart and the guys that do all that hard work to get that up. Just, if everybody could just keep in mind that when they put the signs up and try to keep the kids off, it's in the interest of maintaining the ice, so you know, the problem we have is the temperature fluctuates all over the map, so you know, we get lucky, we get a hard freeze, and then it's in pretty good shape, but in the interim periods, when it's just slushy, it's better to keep everybody out of there. Otherwise, it just makes it murder to try to redress it and have it nice.
Actually, there were probably, Zach can, probably six people out there last week, and I saw Zach walking his dogs, and I said, why don't you take a picture of them and send it to the Beecher, so he did, so maybe we'll get some publicity for the Fire Department, because that is a lot of work. You just keep the deer out of there. That's what I've noticed.
Water Board, Mary Lou?
The Water Board met on November twenty-third, and we, the old business was a public hearing for three issues. One is the fire protection charges, the hydrants, the storm drains, and then it was John Wall's proposal on quick disconnect fitting, so we talked about that. The next thing is Horizon Bank, because we now have quite a few people that have ACH taken, their water bill taken out. So they're going to charge us a flat fee, which is fifty dollars a month, which is fairly reasonable. We are working, if you were at the special meeting earlier, or late last month, there's a few people that we have sent letters, and we have told them to call when I'm there on Thursday morning, and I'll keep people posted. And we have one collection letter out, and Chris Willoughby and I are working on that. I'm waiting for the board to get back to me, because the person didn't sign for their certified letter, whether we go to a I wanted to say Judge Judy, but that's not it, but
All claims court.
Yeah. So that's, we'll see. Our next meeting is December twenty-eighth. It's a Monday, and it's Zoom at nine o'clock in the morning.
Great. Budget and Finance, Bill?
We met on the twelve-nine. There will be a ten percent decrease in the in the health insurance for the town employees, which will save the town about ten to twelve thousand dollars. Something that came up, not at the meeting, but it's piece of the Budget and Finance. I just contacted our broker for the STD, LTD, and and life insurance, and that also is a decrease, and that will be about about seventy to seventy-five percent of the prior prior thing. We'll actually go back to Standard Insurance, which was the, which is the company that handled our STD, LTD. When I, when I got into office in 2012, we got a better price from UNUM, but now like what happens with insurance companies, they have given us a better price, so that should save us also a few thousand dollars a year. We did talk about the you know, this upcoming hearing and ordinance that we're going to go through. One of the things that that came up, I think we'll be talking about the SRF thing. One of the things that made me a little cherry, and I guess maybe the rest of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, when we asked to wait on the on the paving was, one of the things that beat by votes reminded us was, if we don't get the SRF funding, we owe Haas one hundred and two thousand dollars, because that money that he has been, that he has been investing in studies have been paid by Michigan City, and it's going to be rolled into the SRF funding, so that, that does change the playbook a little bit. But we still have, we've, we've had substantial completion of the of the Stop 24. You'll see on the, on the check register that we have a the majority of the fee to Gary up construction of twenty-four thousand dollars, of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and two hundred and nine thousand dollars has been, a check has been issued and is waiting if it's approved. Tomorrow, I will send a copy of that check and a copy of their invoice to Save the Dunes, who is the front person for the coastal grants, and hope that as soon as possible, we can get a hundred thousand dollars reimbursement from the coastal grants project. We are still, we are still waiting on the on the, on the final bill from Reese Riley. There will be, of course, probably a ten percent retinage, but but I'm expecting about seven hundred thousand dollars to be billed from Reese when we get that, and that, you know, so we have, right now, we still have over three million dollars in the bank, but that's going to shrink precipitously when we, we start making these these final payments. In addition to that, one of the three, you know, we do have the, we do have about nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in the in the Geo Bond Fund, and that will unfortunately be tapped when we start doing the Stop 21 and Stop 23. But in general, we're, we're in good shape, but I think we, we made a vote. It's actually John John voted, John Wall voted against it, although he's not a formal member of the Budget and Finance Committee, but so I guess it was a four to nothing vote to wait and see where we, where we go with with this, with this paving. I'm very in favor of the the three to one match is very attractive to us. It's just that we don't have, when we do a million dollars, we have to come up with three hundred thousand. And that just with all the other expenses we've got, it's not it's not the easiest thing to accomplish. We've drilled down the the Setit Fund, and of course, the Riverboat Fund, which usually brings in a hundred thousand dollars a year, is about half of that now, so we're we're, we're hoping that we start to get people back to the casino, because with that hundred thousand dollars is very, is very necessary. We, you know, our expenses for legal, I'm hoping will, will be reduced, but we're still probably at at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and that's just way too much for what we you know, for a town our size, but I understand there's there's issues, and maybe those things will be will be fixed, but anyway, so we're in good shape.
And Bill, we did receive the SRF funding?
I know that. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Before that, that was my point. We've received that, but but when we, you know, we had that meeting, we had not received the
Okay.
That just came in a couple of days ago.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any questions? Bill, human resources.
No, no meetings. You know, we've got Chief Swistick coming in on January 4. And and he will work together with Bob and, and we're we'll, we'll continue to, you know, to move forward. We, we do have a proposal from New Focus and we will, we're, we're almost finished with our job descriptions. Right now, what I've suggested and that what we're going to have later on in the meeting is that we have a, we have, so we have a, a salary ordinance that is passed. But the salary ordinance that you're looking at is, or that we will be looking at will just be the salary ordinance, exactly the ranges that we had for 2020. So we're passing that with no increases for the, for the elected officials. And we can always do increases for the employees if that is deemed either for, either as a blanket increase or as a, as a special increase for individual employees. And that's, you know, that's still to come. We're, we're going to do the study and and peg all the you know, the positions and see where we stand, how we, how we match up with other communities. And then we'll do that. But we can do that in January, you can do that in February. We're you know, we can, we can make it, we can make it effective on the date that we pass it, or we can make it effective on January 1. So right now, we're not, we're not, we have no increases. But the employees, they're going to be saving a little money on their insurance anyway.
Bob, we did, Bill, we did meet in November. And we are working very hard on getting the job descriptions complete so that we can have the focus people do a survey. And I, I think it's going really well. We have Pam Creager and she's helping us get them all on the template that we want. And we are going from six time, six different timesheets for Bill to one. And we will have that ready and ready to go hopefully by the end of the month. And then we'll talk to the certain people so they realize who has to sign their timesheet. So we've gotten a lot accomplished and well, we just started meeting in March. So I, I feel pretty good about it. And Mike Connaughton's a big help with this. And I would say that he's helping us get a lot of this done.
And has, and has Mary Lou also. So thank you.
Yep, they've done a good, they've done yeoman's work. Building Commission, we've actually had two meetings since our last town council meeting. First one was on November the 13. We have a number of properties that have been in violation and are now in the court system, which Chris is working on. One problem we've had is we've, we've had an issue where a number of people are ignoring stop work orders. And before I go on any further with the report, I'd like to make a motion to try and facilitate the process of enforcing those stop work orders that we allow our building commissioner. When he's aware that someone's ignoring a stop work order, that he can call Chris Willoughby directly. So we can start legal proceedings immediately. We're having people just ignoring our stop work orders, ignoring our town's plan in terms of what kind of community we want. And basically violating our ordinances. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow our building commissioner to do that. Do I hear a second?
Wait, wait a minute. Just, I want to ask a question. So what did we do in the past if we, if they were?
Well, the, the problem is, is these issues have to wait until the next building commission meeting. By the time we have a next building commission meeting, the violates, whatever their building that's in violation is oftentimes done or so far along with the project that, you know, it's created a huge problem. So the idea is to move quickly on these so we can get them stopped. That's been the issue.
Okay. So, okay, so, but just so I understand, so if, if the building commissioner saw somebody and they didn't obey the stop work order, then he would call Chris Willoughby. And then what would happen?
Well, then Chris would start legal proceedings, correct, Chris?
Well, Mary Lou, yeah, because there's, there's a few different issues at all of these, you know, some are the fines and collections, which, you know, those are citations and you know, between chief and the building inspector Indiana, they keep track. What we're talking about more is the ability to, to maybe get injunctive relief, et cetera. Now, we're still at the mercy of the courts and doing those. But the whole, I think what Dr. Lemay mentioned it to me is giving authority to move forward and stopping those projects where that, that stop work orders out there, they're ignoring. And, you know, there's one out there that building and continue building and ultimately said, don't care. So that, that's what's before you. Of course, it's the, the pleasure of the board.
To be clear, because Dr. Lemay only gave me an example. So I don't drive around the whole town, but if I'm driving along and I see work being done, I call Deanna and say, hey, are they registered? And she'll like, no. So should I call Lou Mellon?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Oh, I have his phone number, but I just, you know, I'm not going to stop and confront them, but I'm like, hmm.
No. And I do this, and I'm on the building commission and I'm the same way. I, my feeling is, is my job is not to be the enforcement arm. And so I tend to get a hold of Lou. And so Lou, Lou's getting a little tired of my messages, but
Well, the other thing is, a lot of them don't, they don't have an identity on their trip. I'm like, hey, that looks like more than window washing. So
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that has been an issue.
Well, I, just a point of reference for you and maybe when we can get back to this, Deanna said that, you know, and a few years ago, every week she would get who the registered contractors were, and then she'd give it to the police department, then they would enforce it. So maybe we can get back to that. I think it would help. Because I have called her a lot of times. I'll say, hey, is this person registered? And she's like, no. So
Yeah, yeah, that, that issue's been on our agenda for the building commission for the last couple of months.
Okay.
The problem is our last building commission meeting went three and a half hours. And by the time we got to it, everybody was exhausted.
Exhausted. Yeah. Okay. Well, well, you know what? Let's work on it.
Yep, I agree. And it'll, it'll hopefully, hopefully we can deal with it. I, you know, come the dead of winter.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. All right. So I'll get back to my report. At that same meeting, we had a request for a solar panel installation in the backyard. The town has no ordinances regarding solar panels. So we put that decision off. And the APC is going to work on a solar panel ordinance at our next meeting. Shoreland Hills requested to put in some six by six posts, posts on the vacant lot where they have parking to try and protect their dunes. That was permitted.
And they're they're actually in Long Beach. They bought that lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the Shoreland Hills lie. Yeah. 3006 Lake Shore Drive. They had a permit to allow them to replace an existing seawall. However, when they started work, they discovered that a seawall was buried. And that they could not pound their seawall where they wanted to without going through this steel sheet piling. And that doesn't work. So they, they're going to have to get back to us with a plan. They actually met with us at the last meeting also, and we decided that we did not want to approve a plan where they were going to put that seawall lakeward of the old one. And that it was going to have to be landward of that. They're going to think about that and decide what they wanted to do. 2926 Lake Shore Drive. Wanted to replace a seawall also. However, their plan did not involve any tiebacks. Tiebacks are kind of the anchors that hold the seawall and keep them from falling out toward the lake. That's the problem that we had with that whole row of seawalls between stop 22 and 23. We told them to go back, come up with a plan with, with tiebacks. They did try to tell us that they didn't think they needed them. The building commission respectfully disagreed, especially given our experience between 22 and 23.
But then they came back subsequently with a acceptable plan.
Yeah, yeah, at the next meeting. Yeah. Yeah. And so that was the next, and so, and the next meeting was let's see, that was November the 13th meeting. Then on December 11, we had the last meeting. And some of those, these are carryover issues that were there again. And we did get that plan again from them. I believe we gave our building commissioner permission to take a look at their plan, their tiebacks, make sure that he felt they were adequate. And if he felt they were adequate, he could approve that plan. Larry Waller, building commissioner, has a lot of seawall experience, which we've relied on quite heavily. Stop 20
That's 2926 you're talking about, Bob? I'm just
That is at 3006.
3006, okay.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Am I talking about the wrong? Am I wrong? Did I say the wrong number? I might have.
Yeah, I think it was 2926 had the tieback issue, right?
Right. Yeah, 2926 had the tieback issue. 3006 is the one with the you know, sheet piling that they, we, we don't want them to go lakeward of. Yeah. Maybe I wasn't clear on that. Stop 23. We've got a plan to put in basically a revetment. We thought about trying to incorporate the stairs into that revetment. However, it's going to be prohibitively expensive to do that. So we're going to probably build that revetment and put stairs over that. Putting some kind of braces where a stairway can go down. Hopefully, we can put metal stairs at the bottom so that it'll be a permanent structure that hopefully our lake can't take out. We had to issue a 2300 Lake Shore Drive. That property there is built on town property. We've got some boundary issues that we need to deal with. And so our attorney is going to be talked into their attorney and hopefully we can come up with a plan that's going to be satisfactory to the town and the homeowner. I think those are the big issues. We did have 2024 Golden Gate. Well, it has a small lot and wanted to increase the footprint of their house ordinance. Say, if you have a nonconforming lot, you can't increase your footprint. And so that was denied. And we suggested that they consider going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's the report for building commission. Any questions? If not, we'll go to BZA. BZA also had two meetings since our last town council meeting. On November the 10. Keith and Victoria Shander at 2814 Lindale Way decided to withdraw their appeal. Brian and Danielle Honer at 2002 Somerset had their request approved. And Bill and Karen Loftus at 2600 Hermione Trail asked to have theirs continued. And that continuation took place at the next meeting on 12/8. And at that meeting, Bill and Carol Loftus, 2600 Hermione Trail, had their request for variance denied. Any questions about any of that? If not, advisory plan commission, Nick's not here, but the last advisory plan commission was canceled. Next meeting is December 21. That's next Monday at seven o'clock. Bill, I think we're up to you for the revenue report.
Building permit revenue report for November 2020. Sixteen permits totaling $1,156,161. Town revenue of $12,260. We had three electric permits in November, $395 with revenue of $3950. One street cut permit for, with $100 revenue. The legal expenses paid were $9,150. $960 to Austin Kiper Desitis. And $8,490 to Reggie Nelson and James. Can we have a motion to accept the reports and the and the revenue report?
I make a motion to accept it.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. The town's executive order. So right now, as it stands at the community center, the renters who are renting businesses there who have one-on-one experiences with their clients are allowed to continue with the one-on-one experiences. The YMCA has been closed. My feeling is, is that probably ought to stay that way. Bill, I know I was supposed to talk to the lady in charge of the Y. I tried to call her a couple of times and wasn't able to get a hold of her. But my feeling is that, that this pandemic is certainly no better than it was. It's probably worse than it was, although we are hopefully seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. That light is still pretty far off. And I would certainly hate to see us create a problem, especially since we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that. And then I know there's some people in the audience. After we closed it, I started going to the Y at the Elston and I talked to a lady and asked her for some numbers of how many people we have. Because we don't have, when I'm walking there at six o'clock in the morning, there's maybe two people in the gym and I'm out and I'm in the, if it's nice outside, I'm outside. If not, I'm walking in there. They haven't had one issue with COVID. They're very clean. Actually, I think there's a couple of people in the audience will tell you that they're cleaner than Elston. Elston's a wonderful facility, but Long Beach is so close. And I think, I think you should listen to some of them, maybe open it up to the audience and ask them, because I've had a lot of complaints from people. They said, you know, we haven't had any problems. We're careful. We wear a mask. Even before COVID, at the Y, you wipe your equipment down after you finish. They have spray bottles of disinfectant. So they, they've been doing that. Well, I've probably been a member there at least six years and they've always done that and they're always cleaning. And I just think it was, it's a shame. We don't want to lose our renters in there. And if they had an issue, it'd be different. But we haven't had anybody at the old school test positive or have COVID. So that's my feeling. And I know there's a couple of people out there because they've contacted me and they, we got the numbers on it from November. Well, I know Megan Applegate's out there and I'm going to rely on her. But I first went to them and from November 1 through the 18th, they had 408 people participate. And then I asked them if they could break it down during the day. So the busy, there isn't anybody there from like four to seven. So that's why they started closing an hour early. The biggest participation, and when you say check in, I'm out in the hallway. So even though I've checked in, I'm not in the gym. I mean, I could be if I wanted to. So it's not, it's not overpopulated. I'm serious and they keep their distance. I'm, I'm really serious about it.
Well, my, my concern is, is, is two things. One is, you know, surface spreading is, is a very minor way that this virus is, is contracted or spread. It's airborne. And then at the last meeting, I believe I heard that there are some people who are there who are working out. And despite the fact that we said they had to wear face masks, we're not. That's, that's very concerning to me, especially with people huffing and puffing on a stairmaster or bicycle or whatever. So that, that's, those are my concerns. First off, any other council comments?
Mary Lou, I think you started to rattle off some participation numbers at times of the day, and I don't think you finished that. Did you?
Okay, let me get them. Just a minute. Because Megan's in the audience and I, what I did was, because I ran into her at Elston and I gave her my numbers and I know she expounded on, just a minute.
While Mary Lou's getting her numbers, one thing I would say is if there was a way for that room, the gym, to have some air circulation other than just moving the, the static, the old air around, that would be helpful. I think if they could figure out a way to I think if they could figure out a way to, or if we want to help participate in that. But if you could figure out a way to get, I'll call it makeup air. That's a, a construction term. But if you look at buildings downtown, they're all doing it too. You'll see, you know, temporary duct work flying out of some of the high rises because they're trying to drag new air into these buildings that are all sealed off. And the problem with that gym building, or our, our gym room, so to speak, is it has absolutely no circulation. In the summertime, they used to open the windows, but I know some of those windows aren't functioning real well. I was just talking, Mary Lou, about the air circulation. And I wonder if there'd be a way for them to come up with a, you know, a fan with a window open or a duct work that went through a window and came back out the other end. So you had air that was coming through the, the room. That's, that's one of, I think, my concerns as well.
Oh, sure. No, no, I, and I know that's, that's the group that, you know, that are in there. But I've had people stop me and they're like, so I, when I talked to this lady at the Y, and this has been a couple of weeks ago. And I just said, can you tell me, so from November second through the eighteenth, they had a total of, we had, because they're not open on Sundays, the busiest, the least busiest day is Saturday. So we had a, a total of two hundred and two possible hours. Because they're open fifteen hours a day during the week, and then I think it's ten hours on Saturday. And we had four hundred and eight members use this facility. Well, what I'm telling you, when I punch in, I'm not going into the facility. I'm walking in the courtyard. And if it's nice outside, I'm not in there. So I just want you to know this. So their hours are, if we could, can, uh, Dr. Lemay, would it be possible to listen to Megan? Because I know she follow.
Yeah, let's open it up. Um, Megan, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good. Go ahead.
So I reached out to Kathy Workman at the Y M C A. And, and let me first preface it with, Dr. Lemay, I, I get your concern. I really do. Um, and, you know, at some point, you know, you get to the point where, especially with the numbers, you, you had to make a judgment call, which I get. But I think there's ways to accomplish your health objectives and safety objectives with completely closing it down. Uh, and that's one, limited capacity. Um, two, like John and Mary Lou said, opening the windows to have some fresh air circulation. And B, just reiterate, you know, or three, reiterating to the Y M C A, you know, please make sure that you're enforcing the mask. I'm there at six AM and I'm there by myself. And I'm there by myself till seven, when two or three other people show up and they're sitting on their machines with a mask. So I got some data from Kathy Workman at the Y M C A. And she gave me, I wanted to know based on specific sample size. So she gave me a Monday, a Wednesday and a Saturday. Based on any given time, what was the num, most number of people we saw at the Y M C A? And the highest number of people ever throughout the sample size, Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, was six people. I mean, it's, it's a relatively large, um, gym. Uh, I, I'm going to agree with Mary Lou. I, I've only been to Elston a few times. There's nothing wrong with Elston. I just, we have our niche group at Long Beach. We all have our respect for each other's spaces. And you can tell some of those people are going to Elston and they miss Long Beach. So I just, I think there's a way to accomplish, um, some of your objectives. And I'd be happy to send you this information she sent me. But the max number of people I ever saw was six. Um, the second runner-up was five. Um, and that was on a Monday. On Wednesday, the highest number of people was five at any given time. And then on a Saturday, the highest number of people was four. So I guess i- is there, is there kind of a, a negotiating or compromising to closing it to where we, okay, limit capacity to no more than five people at, you know, in the gym at one, or, you know, at the fitness center at once, as well as opening a window, you know, reassuring, reassurance from the Y M C A that they're doing, you know, as much as they can from a safety perspective, we're cleaning. And I see they're cleaning there nonstop. I mean, she's right behind me cleaning. I can vouch for that. So I, I, I guess, you know, my own personal physician, when this, uh, pandemic, you know, kind of hit, hit everybody, was he said to keep yourself healthy, so walking a lot, keep your lungs strong. Uh, and to make sure that you're, um, you know, drinking a lot of fluids. But I think that the Long Beach Fitness Center really is mental health for a lot of people too. It's for me particularly. So I guess, I just, I, I would urge you and encourage you to kind of rethink based on the data I just presented, and I'd be happy to send it to you. And thinking of a compromise to allow people to still go and keep their routine to help them physically and mentally, you know, healthy.
I guess, you know, they're probably, there's probably no way to put fans to make that a negative pressure room. I don't think those windows open appropriately to, to put a fan in them. But they, they, they kind of, they just kind of.
And we make them open, only need to open one, wouldn't you?
Yeah, but you'd really want a fan blowing out to make, you know, the idea is not to be blowing the virus all around. It's to be blowing the virus out.
Right.
You know, so that's, that, that.
I don't think, opening a window's not going to get the job done. You're going to have to have some kind of a mechanical way to get circulation, pressure air circulation. I don't think it's insurmountable. I think maybe, you know, if you got an HVAC guy in there and said, hey, what's cheapest way we can throw up some? I mean, I, what I see on these high rises in Chicago, they're just throwing a flexible duct out the window and pumping air. So I mean, that's really all we need is something. I don't think you need to exchange a lot of air, but I think some air would help. One other thing, I'll make a point, Megan, I appreciate all your information. You too, Mary Lou. You know, keep in mind now, the college kids generally pepper that place pretty solidly through the break. So I think, uh, I, I'd be in favor of some sort of limit on occupancy. And then I think the condition I would like to see would be some sort of a mechanical air exchange.
Yeah, and I, and then, then the other thing that I don't know is, is surmountable is I understand there's no way to mandate masks. I mean, we can say you wear a mask, but if somebody shows up and doesn't wear a mask, I don't think you can expect the gal behind the counter to, to enforce that. And I know our police don't want to enforce that. So that, that is a concern.
Oh, I know. I agree with you. I saw somebody going in C V S today and I'm like, what? You're not wearing a mask? And he was young, but I didn't confront him, so.
How about if we, how about if we, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we revisit this. And I think if we can get an HVAC person in there to figure out a way to get some air exchange real quick. And if we make a proposal, you know, whether the town, I'm assuming the town would participate as the landlord rather than trying to spit the Y for it. But maybe we can come up with a compromise with an air exchange proposal and then a limit on occupancy.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Is there any windows in the Y? Because when I'm in there, I just see that they put like storm windows from the inside out. Are there any windows that open? Megan, are there any windows that open?
Yeah. They used to open.
I feel like it says, don't open the windows.
Yeah, but you, but, but John's right. They, you can't put a, a fan in because there are those type of windows just coming out about what, forty-five degrees and stop. I mean, they don't open all the way down.
Okay, so here's somebody that's almost as old as John Coker.
Nobody's my age. Nobody's that old.
We had exhaust fans, John. So you just put the box fan up and blow it out towards the, where the deer are. And that'll suck the air out of the, that's how we grew up.
And that didn't work if you could do that on those windows, but you can't.
Why not?
They aren't built that way, are they, John?
No, they're tilt-out. They're tilt-out, they're tilt-out awning windows. They wouldn't be very effective. But listen, if we get an HVAC contractor in there, I'm sure they can cook up something. Something that we can either replace one of the window panes on the tilt-outs with a, you know, a ductible, the one-way sort of a thing. It's not going to be very expensive, I don't think. And I think it would, it would alleviate a lot of our fears about no air exchange in there.
Well, and we don't want to lose the Y. I mean, that's kind of like losing the, the, when the school was no longer a school. That, the Y is a nice focus place for everybody. And as, as Megan said, it's like your own group there and you're, it's a support group that you're all, you're all there working out together.
That therein lies the problem, Mary Lou. I think we have to come up, I think you've, we've all, I, I, I'm going to just reiterate the motion. Can we get an HVAC contractor? I don't know, Bill wants to contact them or?
You know, we've got a community center committee. We should, we should, we should not usurp their authority.
We're going to wind up with a special meeting in December anyway for some other things. Why don't we just see if they can hurry up and get a HVAC guy in there to come up with some sort of air.
Yes.
It's an acquainted.
Yep.
We use a company called Bloomfield Mechanical at the club. And we just had resp care. It's a system that attaches to your HVAC and it's an air purifier. I can send whoever needs the information on it. We did it in all of our HVAC and we have about six different units and it was six thousand dollars for all that. They've put them in all the Horizon Banks and many, um, satellite-like health services.
We could certainly look into that way.
So the Y has that very small unit behind their laundry. I don't think it would be a big cost for them.
I'll pass that name on to the, uh, community, the community center committee and, uh, we'll see if they, uh, what they.
Yeah, so the company is Bloomfield Mechanical and Mark McLean's the manager.
Mark McLean.
Well, one of the issues though, in it, as opposed to what you guys have, is all we have in that thing is, it's kind of like a unit heater, uh, cooling system. It's just a big blower that sits on the ceiling. There really is not an HVAC system that drags air from anywhere else. I think, but again, it's not going to be very expensive to do what we're talking about. We just have to get.
Yeah, they have several different options.
I, I made the motion. Let's get it seconded and move on here.
I second it.
So the motion was about having a community center committee, uh, work on figuring out what they can do to increase circulation, make it a negative pressure room. How about a, um, limit on how many people are in there?
That's part of it.
Limited to five? Does that sound okay? So I'll make that as an amendment. Do I hear a second? Limit, limited to five people in there?
In the gym?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I'm walking in the hallway, I'm not one of the five, right?
You, you don't count. Yep.
Okay, good.
So five people and, uh, I guess we can't do anything about the masks, huh?
Well, I, I think, I think we can enforce it. I, you know, I understand they're just workers at the Y and I hate to put them in that position, but I think we can just say if you, you know, if they don't want to wear a mask, they shouldn't be in there.
Well, you know, we can always say that, um, if we find out that people are not wearing masks, we're going to have to shut you down again. And then it's up to them to decide how much they want to enforce that.
Okay, Dr. Lemay, this is one other point. It, just like with bars, restaurants, other places, the health department's involved. And they're sending around third parties to check. And so that's the other option is that somebody can report that and it takes it off. You know, again, as you said, it's not really going to be the police department that's putting in there or town officials or putting other people. I mean, hopefully those who are responsible at the Y, that, that is kind of their purview. But, you know, the health department's another option as well, as well as shutting it down altogether if, if they can't self-monitor, so.
Can you put signage up at each entry way that says mask required to enter?
We have that now.
Yeah, I was going to say it should be anyway, but yeah, I'm not sure if they're up.
It is. And then the, the Y has like a, a billboard, you know, like an easel. And it says on that before you even enter that you have to wear a mask. So maybe people can't read.
Yeah. Dr. Lemay?
Yep.
May I say, just Dr. Yes, may I say something? Uh, I, I agree first of all with Mr. Willoughby. The health department is very interested in going out and making sure that mask compliance is, is in, in order, is, is in fact. Uh, but not to be a fly in the ointment. I love the Y. I've been a member for years and I miss it dearly. But I do want to say one thing about Mary Lou and her statistics. Is that she said, well, we've been open and there's been no cases of COVID. The problem with that statistic is that the cases of COVID, uh, in young people are not symptomatic. They may not even get tested. But if they contracted and they're asymptomatic, they're carriers. What we're worried about, or at least what I'm hearing here, that I, I'm worried about is young people working out at the gym during holiday break, even at five, the airs, even with five people occupancy, the virus is aerosolized and lingers in closed environments for at least thirty minutes. So as they walk around from station to station, breathing, the masks would help a lot. But, you know, uh, the air is still in, 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 at risk. So I am concerned about young people going to the gym, doing well and bringing it home. We don't know if there's any community spread afterwards. So that is a concern. I think Mr. Ball's suggestion is the right one. Dr. Lemay, uh, mentioned it too, which is that, um, you need a negative airflow system. And it's got to be done professionally so they can get the aerodynamics, the size of the room, the kind of circulation that's needed to achieve that. Because if the goal is to open it safely, not just open it, but safely, you do need negative pressure and you do need the masks. But again, the health department could be contacted. Unfortunately, they're not going to be there when someone's there and refuses to wear a mask. They'll come in and close it. So, you know, it would be better if somehow the community could get behind voluntarily wearing their masks. That's, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, so we have a motion. Uh, and that is basically to bring in an HVAC guy to try and make that a negative pressure room to limit the number of people in there at one time to five people and to mandate masks. Any other discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Yep.
When the Y closed abruptly, I thought it was very, um, concerning that we kind of weren't informed why, like because we weren't wearing masks, because we weren't social distancing or whatever the case may be. But I agree with Megan that it's a very, um, stress relieving, um, thing for me to be able to work out. I don't feel like going to Elston. I think it's a bigger facility with more people. And I'm not comfortable doing that. When I work out on the machine, I clean it, then the girl comes right behind me and cleans it. So it's very safe. The other day I was, uh, walking, uh, just, you know, around. And, um, girls are coming out of the Y with their yoga mats saying that Laura Lee has permission to have four or less people in her classes. Now, how can that be fair? And I really think the town, if that's going on, is opening themselves up for lawsuits of discrimination. Like one person can do it and one person can't. I, I just don't think it's right.
Well, so we want to limit this to four people in the gym. And I don't know where Laura Lee does her classes.
In the, at the Y, in her room, at the community center in her room. These girls were coming out of the community center with their yoga mats.
Yeah.
And said she had permission for four or less people.
Yeah.
So is that true?
I believe at the last meeting, the decision by the board was to allow Laura Lee to have her yoga. Was it, we, we said one-on-one. Did we say four? I seem to remember something about yoga classes. Am I remembering that wrong?
Yeah, she was having yoga classes with ten and now she's down to four. It is a thousand-foot, uh, classroom.
And that's smaller than the gym. I don't understand the discrepancy. If you're allowed to have four, why isn't the gym allowed to have four or five or six per, per square foot?
That's what we're talking about is, so we're going to try and fix that now to allow them to have five. But I think we need to have these conditions met. Uh, and you know, maybe we need to revisit the yoga class decision. That, that maybe wasn't the best decision.
Okay, thank you.
I guess let's first deal with, with this then. Uh, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so it's unanimous. I will get ahold of, uh, the community center committee and we'll see if we can, and the Y, and see if we can get these conditions met. And once we have those conditions met, I think we can let the Y reopen.
May I bring up something else about the, about the, the fees? Uh, you know, it pains me greatly because at one point in time, we, we really were almost paying, you know, the, the community center was never intended to be a profit center, but we were, we had enough renters in there that we were actually nearly breaking even with our significant utility costs and everything else. And, uh, it's, it's painful, but I, I do feel that we should continue with half rent for those people that can open. So even if we do the, even if the Y can open, I think they need to be half rent too, until we get past this pandemic. Is that, uh, is that unreasonable?
Yeah, no, I think that, and that's, that's sort of implied in what we're doing. We've, because we have everybody at half rent, right?
Yeah, okay, yes, that's, that's right.
Do we want to revisit that decision about Laura Lee and the, uh, yoga classes? Uh, I think Kathy Brown makes a good point. If that, that room is in fact smaller, that decision probably wasn't the best one we've ever made. So I'll make a motion to, um, say that the yoga classes need to be limited to. So I'll make a motion to um say that the yoga classes need to be limited to frankly, one person at a time if if we're gonna allow that.
The only other way to do that would be have that room under the same conditions as the Y.
If we're if we're bringing the the, you know, if we're bringing the guy in to look at the at the Y, why can't we have him bring it looking at the at Laura Lee's room too?
I agree with Bill.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Raymond Binder. If I may just enter a small comment. I've been listening to the discussion and I think the biggest issue here is consistency.
Yep.
So if you're gonna limit the yoga to one and the gym to four and then count the number of people are walking, I think the idea is to keep consistency across the environment in that building. And by closing the Y, I think there it is, the diversity issue of the people who have used it. My husband needs to be at the Y. I'm not going to drive him to Elston, but I would drive him over here to Long Beach so he could use the machines and get his therapy done. We have belonged to the Y for a very long time. Long Beach is the place to be. So if there are four people in the Y, four people with yoga with the distancing based on square footage, there are legal issues that tell you how many feet have to be uh used to separate people at six feet. So if the Y is able to do it, then the yoga people should be able to do it as well. And we should be open for people who can walk, especially with the winter coming. We do have, as I hate to say, senior citizens, but we have elders in the community. I'd like to say elders. And the elders need exercise and they need places to walk. They cannot go to Notre Dame and walk in the church, but they can go to our community center. And I think the rent that will keep it open will help the village as well. The more times you close it, there's inconsistency. I've heard that from many renters, that it's consistently inconsistent into way that building is maintained, how rents are charged, and when people are notified that they have to move their equipment out, less than twenty-four hours later, we're gonna lose renters if that is continually inconsistent. So I would ask that, yes, what John Wall suggested, I think is an important motion that is approved. But once that is approved, I think we need to be on safe grounds across everyone that the village is consistent into what the requirements are. Every store we go into, you see masks must be worn to be allowed in. There will always be someone who's gonna say, well, I don't need to do that. Well, then we have the health department to say, this is required. And I'm sorry, we'll have to say, thank you very much, but we do not appreciate your business at this time. We are trying to keep our community safe. So thank you very much for your efforts. And I know it's a frustrating job, Mary Lou, and everyone else, but we all appreciate it. And especially appreciate when our citizens in our community are heard, their voices are heard. And thank you, Kathy Brown. Thank you all.
So in the in the interest of being consistent, I think since right now the Y is closed until these conditions are met, I think that the yoga class should have the same um limitations until until we can get this fixed. So I would make that motion.
I think I think I agree with your point about consistency. And now that we've heard from everybody, why don't we just have this guy research air exchange in the whole place? I mean, I don't know if we're gonna be able to afford it, but it's no different from the, it's no different for the walkers either. If you get four or five people hanging together, walking through that place, they're spreading the same germs as everybody.
John, we open the doors.
I hear you, but it's it's.
I've only been in there twice since COVID because it's been so nice to walk outside. Why would I want to go in there? But yeah.
Again, you know, the whole the whole reasoning behind us putting restrictions on this is because we don't want to get into the boat of being the super spreader building. So if we can figure out an HVAC plan, I think that's the way to go.
Well, how soon do you think the community center will react?
Community Center Committee, they've been they've been pretty pretty on top of things. So I can give them a call as soon as we get done with this meeting. Uh, but I guess my thought is is we probably do need to close down the yoga until we get this situation consistent. Uh, so I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill, can you afford to inform the yoga lady that in the interest of consistency, we're gonna close her down and let her know what our plan is? Uh, and maybe give me her contact information so I can talk to her too.
Yeah, I will. I'll go.
Okay. Uh, sewer update. Uh, so SRF funding was approved. Uh, the anticipation is that construction on the sewers on Lake Shore Drive will hopefully start in fall of 2021.
Bob, I think that I think the preliminary engineering report was approved. I'm not so sure. Did you guys get another communication that talked about the funding? My my understanding from Haas was that the P, the preliminary engineering report was passed and it and it it wound up going through the thirty day remonstrance period successfully. So I think that's the only thing that's happened. I'm not sure SRF actually was approved unless you know something.
It's approved pending the final uh engineering work to get it in place to put bids out. That's that's what needs to be done now. Haas is gonna make the final reports and then be in a position to let bids and but but the money will be there assuming we follow those steps that they set out in their correspondence.
Okay.
So it's basically approved unless we stumble at the end here and don't get the Haas isn't gonna stumble. He's gonna get everything we need.
Yeah, his timeframe, the way he explained to me, we just happen to be meeting with him on some other things, John. He explained to me that that now they, with the preliminary engineering report being approved, then they can go ahead and start on the final engineer,
Correct.
which will go through the into spring or early spring. And they have a month's long process. And then at that point, then the SRF would be attached. And then the bidding process would be probably late spring or and then the project would kick off in the fall after the summer rush. I think that's, is that your understanding, John?
Well, yeah, I suppose that's okay. But yeah, it's basically a done deal, assuming we do the final engineering, like you say, assuming we buy American Steel and do those things. But uh, yeah, it's as soon as the engineering report is done, then we'll be able to set it up for bids. And right, they want to start construction after Labor Day.
Okay, uh, step twenty-four. Uh, basically that project is done. Um, basically, um, at this point, we need to um involve Save the Dunes in an outreach project, which is part of our grant proposal. Um, also, uh, Save the Dunes needs to come up with a maintenance plan for our town employees uh, and to um instruct the employees on how to maintain that property now that it's done. So that's about it on stop twenty-four.
One quick comment, but by the way, if you interrupt.
Go ahead.
The one of the things that we couldn't do or didn't want to do based on finances was pave that little half moon at the top.
Yeah.
So the reason we didn't incorporate that in the paving this year, or at least try to get it done while they were here was if you're if you're down at the at the new uh pavilion and you look back to the land side, there's a lot of old debris that the town allowed to be dropped in there, a lot of old concrete and asphalt, a lot of junk. We'd like to pull that out of there. To do that, we'll have to put a decent sized backhoe with a long boom on it to get in there and pull some of that out of there. So that's why we didn't pave that half moon at the top right now. So I think if we can think about that for the future, depending on how our finances look, we'd like to get that cleaned up a little bit on the hillside, basically, and then replant some more dune grass in there. And then that would, you know, that would leave us with that whole area just looking looking really well.
Good deal. Um, stormwater utility, uh, we'll put that off till next month. I don't think we're ready to go on that. Uh, the proposed golf cart ordinance. So uh, let's start off with council comments on that. Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments on it? I had a couple. Um, one is um as far as the uh, we talked about putting a three inch registration sticker on there. I think we need to make sure that that registration sticker is permanently attached. We don't want people attaching it with Velcro and then switching it to different golf carts. That's not the idea. Uh, and then in the area of fines, um concerned about people violating the ordinance. Uh, and it strikes me that in our um ordinance here, we have a hundred and fifty dollar annual registration fee. Uh, it seems to me that if it costs a hundred and fifty dollars to register your golf cart, then having a fine of just fifty dollars if you get caught without one seems to be tempting people to say, why should I register? I'll take a chance. Uh, so I think that fine maybe needs to be adjusted. Um, those are my opinions. I don't know what everybody else thinks about that.
Bob, I I didn't, I didn't get a chance to. I I'd like to call some other places and see what they charge for their annual fees. Like, do we know what Grand Beach charges or Michiana or Chest?
Grand Beach charges three hundred dollars, I believe, for registration. And then they charge more if you are not a resident. So, you know, by comparison, I think our hundred and fifty dollars is a pretty, pretty good, good deal.
What about Michiana?
Uh, I don't know what they do. They don't have a golf course.
Oh. What about Chesterton?
I don't know what they do. Not sure.
I'd be happy to call those.
I my question is on the golf carts, do they have to be street legal? Do they, are they gonna have like turn signals?
No, the idea of this was to allow them, if they're not street legal, to still be drug running. Although it has to be during the daytime, correct, chief?
I think he's, did he step out? No, he's.
I know, he's he just, he nodded yes.
Yes, and Michiana Shores charges fifty dollars.
Oh, they do. Okay.
And what and what is, just so I know, what does street legal mean?
Street legal would include mirrors, seat belts, turn signals. Uh, it's it's pretty elaborate.
Okay.
Most of the golf carts out here are okay to ride during the daytime with the equipment they have. But nighttime, it gets a little more restrictive.
Okay. And do you, Bob, do you know what Chesterton charges?
No, I don't.
No, Bob Sokowski?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, I can find out.
I don't believe they have an ordinance for golf carts.
Yeah, and you know, we're not in a hurry because there's not gonna be a lot of golf carts out there until spring.
With their snow tires on, right?
Right. The whole idea was is to get it going until we have it in place for next.
By spring, yep.
So can we wait and look at that so that because didn't didn't Brian, I don't know if Brian's on tonight, but he.
I think he is and and we, once the the council has commented, we'll open it up because I'm sure a lot of people are gonna have opinions.
Okay.
Any other council comments?
My only comment is is on the registration fees, a hundred and fifty dollars. You know, I don't know. To me, seventy-five dollars seems more reasonable to me, but that's just my opinion. I don't would be a little more than uh Michiana or wherever, but be less than Grand Beach, so.
I just want to make a.
Charge, John?
Uh, between fifty and a hundred.
Okay.
And all their golf carts are street legal. And we got and we got a bunch of them down in Wintromack. When they pass that ordinance, I figured five or six old folks would get them and my goodness, I bet they got seventy-five, eighty, a hundred golf carts. All street legal. On the stickers, just make sure when they get renewed that next year you you just be like your license plate, you know?
Throw a tag.
Yeah.
John Wall, did you get a comment?
Yeah, I I sent around some revisions that I thought would be appropriate. I just want to make a couple of public comments and relative to the the need for this. You know, we had a fire, I, again, you don't like to govern based on the outliers, but we had a fire call one night at two o'clock in the morning and we come flying around the corner on Roslyn or Roslyn and Belt Plain and there were about six kids with a golf cart. Two of them are on the roof, two of them are hanging out the side, one was taking pictures with a iPhone on the side. They had no lights and they were surfing down Belt Plain. So, you know, there there's been a lot of abuse and and I think we we definitely need to regulate it. Uh, you know, the the actual fine, I don't think is real critical as much, or rather the registration fee. There will be some costs. You've got, you know, the cost of the stickers, the administrative cost of keeping track of everybody's paperwork. Um, the stickers need to be big enough so the police can see them from the side when there's somebody parked illegally or if there's an underage person running around. And I I I agree that they shouldn't be, you know, Velcroed so they can swap around. But essentially, I think the need is is great. If we're gonna allow them on the streets, we just have to regulate it because we have had some, you know, crazy situations. We've had one golf cart full of kids flip over and have all kinds of injuries. And that's my take on why we need it. But, you know, I'm willing to sit down. I know the the country club has some issues. They've asked if they could be part of a working group to talk about it. And I told Brian that we would entertain that thought tonight. And if we're gonna postpone this thing, I think that's fine. I think maybe in January, we sit down with a group, you know, like a workshop sort of a thing and see what we can do. But I personally, I I don't think, you know, a hundred dollars or thereabouts is all that painful for anybody. But uh, at any rate, you know, if we want to change the money, the the registration fee, I think that's fine. But the bulk of the ordinance, I think, is in pretty good shape.
Okay, Brian, you have some comments you want to make?
Uh, yes, please. And uh, first, our thanks to the council for taking a look at this issue. As the club looks at it, I think we are all for codifying the permissions as to how the carts are used and more so some common sense safety enforcement. Uh, we are all for that. We want to collaborate one hundred percent. Annette was on earlier, but I I speak for her as well, talking as a director of the club. Uh, where we want though, I think Mr. Wall mentioned, working groups or a committee meeting. I think uh, to collaborate on how this registration and implementation will go down uh, is something that is important. I think, one, we could help on some of the efficiencies, uh, because every year the club is already collecting proof of license, proof of insurance, and use fees on the golf course. Uh, so I think we could streamline some of that information with the police department, the clerk's office, whoever that might be, if we get a working group there. We also issued tags. I think we could talk about consolidating what the the tags are if that becomes uh, a piece of it. And yeah, I do think with the fee part of it, thank you, Mrs. McFadden and others for researching some of the other towns because, and we don't want this to be, you know, cost prohibitive. We want to help on the uh efficiency of putting something in. If it does, we're open to reasonable common sense enforcement. But I do have some concern that if this was an arbitrary fee, we've we've already talked tonight, there's a long history of a harmonious neighbor relationship between the club and the town. And Mr. Coker mentioned the tennis courts. Mrs. McFadden talked about our open boundaries, walking. We we know the Fourth of July. We want to keep keep that all all through and to to look at one activity of a subset of our membership as a revenue source without letting everybody weigh in or the club weigh in at a at appropriate committee. Uh, we we just want to collaborate and be a resource.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so why don't we try to set up um maybe a working group um?
After the first of the year.
Absolutely.
Because we know you guys aren't decorating or cooking or.
Right.
Right.
Um, now, we we can only have two members of the uh town council on there. Uh, we can't have a majority. And actually, Chris, because we have a resignation, I don't believe we can even have two, can we?
No, one option maybe, though, that you just have an open workshop and maybe hold a Zoom meeting for that.
Oh, yeah.
You could have a workshop that's.
Police commission do it.
Or that.
That's a good idea. I'm always happy to turf work somewhere else.
Yeah.
Maybe Police Commission could get together with Country Club?
Happy to do it. Uh, one one other question that we've had come up from some of our members too that we put out there beforehand is how this, there are a number of our members who come from Dooland, Michiana, and other neighboring towns where they're either paying already or questioning how that would apply of layering fees or the ability to, you know, regulate fees of people outside the town. So
Yeah, my thought would.
We want to be partners. We think this, the. We want to be partners. We think this, the goals of this are correct, but we want to make sure that it's done efficiently. And fees, if there are any, are reasonable and put to good use.
We currently honor Michiana Shores and Grand Beach's stickers. So.
Okay, we can look at that. I know, you know, um. Grand Beach actually charges people from out of town more. We certainly don't want to do that. So we can talk about that, but let's, let's put the police commission and the. And Brian, you and whoever else you want to bring from the country club and. We can get a report back on that maybe next month.
Uh, you guys, everybody has my information, so I'll, I'll watch for it and I think Annette is happy to join also.
And Chief, maybe if, if you want to turf that to. Your replacement or if you want to do that yourself, that would be fine. What was that?
Mark's on this meeting and I'm sure he's aware of it already, so.
Oh, good. Mark, does that sound okay?
Yeah, sounds wonderful. Get with Brian, uh, right, January 4th, not a problem.
Sounds great. Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah, we won't make you do it before January 4th.
Appreciate it.
The police commission meeting normally meets that. I think it's the second Wednesday, isn't it Bob? Or first Wednesday? I forgot. First Wednesday. So if we want to try to do it the first Wednesday, Brian Hogan, think about the first Wednesday in January. And then that'll be the police commit, the normal public police commission meeting. So we could, you know, we could actually have more council members there if they chose to be there because that's a public meeting anyway. So why don't we just plan on that first Wednesday in January? That'll be our working meeting to discuss the different issues. Mary Lou, if you've got other towns you want to get some information from, that'll be great.
I will. I'd be happy to.
Okay. Are, are you aware of the time of that meeting yet? Or can we?
We usually do it at 8:30 in the morning, but if you need to be accommodated some other way, we can, we can talk about moving the time around, but we do have public notice. On it, so we, we'll need to know quickly if you cannot make it at 8:30.
Uh, we've.
You want to show?
Discuss that. We'll, we'll get you an answer in two days.
Yeah, that's fine.
John, did you say the first Wednesday or the second?
First, first Wednesday, Mary Lou.
All right.
One, six.
I'll.
But again, we, we'd be willing to move it to an evening meeting if we have to, Brian, but again, we have to do that, you know, we have to tell people a couple of days ahead of time about that time change.
Okay, uh, tree ordinance. Everybody get a chance to look at the tree ordinance?
Yes.
Any council comments on the tree ordinance?
The only thing is that I think it might be difficult to enforce because it's, there's so much to it.
Yes.
And so that was my, one of my comments I was a little nervous about.
Yeah, I think there's a lot there. I, I think. They talk about all these lists of different trees. I guess if we're going to pass this ordinance, I'd like to have the list be part of the ordinance too. They talk about, uh, you know, trees that are indigenous to the area, trees that are not native, exotic, they call them, or non-native trees. And the different heights of those trees. Plus it's a tree ordinance and they're talking about plants and shrubs and I guess that seems a little overreaching to me.
You know, Bob, one of the things, and I, I think John Wall knows this, since I'm working on job descriptions, Tom. The street department guy approached me one day that would we pay for him to go to school to be a certified arborist? Because that would be very, it would be very helpful to the town. We don't always need one every day.
Yep.
And even though he has a lot of knowledge, then he'd be certified. And I think that would help. So that might help with the tree ordinance too.
Yep.
Yeah, and he's, he's interested, I think with COVID, it would have to probably be online. But he said he would look into it. I told him, look into it and let John know and then get back to us because. That's when he and I were working on his job description.
Yeah, I think he's gotten that message from a few of us and I think he is planning on it.
Okay.
But I think. I think, Bob, that thing's got enough complexity. You know, we, we kind of dragged our feet through the COVID months. And then I think at the last meeting, if I recall, we made some comments about various. Parts of that ordinance that we thought were a little, that maybe needed to be changed and they went back. I think the committee went back and made some changes and then. Provided it to us, I want to say in this past week, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I think that, that thing needs a workshop as well. I, I don't think we, I, I wouldn't be in favor of trying to pass it tonight.
Yep.
I think there, there's enough complexity. I think I'd like to see Tom involved. You know, one thing I will say, I think the, you know. I think the motivation is great and I think they've done some great work. Um, I'm, I'm a little nervous about it. Tying the hands of the street department.
Yep.
So I think we just need to sit down one more, at least one more time. If, if we want to do that in January, that's fine.
Okay.
And workshop with the. This is the, I'm sorry, not beautification committee, but.
Land Conservation Subcommittee.
Land Conservation Subcommittee. And then who do we want to have meet with them?
I think you need Tom Dolph involved because he's the one that's involved with all the tree work that the town does. And, and as Mary Lou says, he's trying to develop some expertise, which I think is an awesome thing.
But I think he has it, but then he would be certified too.
The what?
He'd hopefully be certified. So, um.
And then do we want? You know, Tom, Tom was aware of the ordinance and we did get his input. I'm sorry, I don't know if you could hear. We did get Tom Dolph's input. He did get a copy of the ordinance and we made the changes he recommended. That are in red, that are about distancing from the fire hydrant and distance of limbs from the street. So. I'm not saying it was the only thing he'd ever want to say. I know he's really busy, um, but we did consult him.
Yeah, he will, he'll be busy in January too. So we may be, I, I hate to do it to you again, Dr. Yost, but I think we may have to wait until the snow. Settles back down to get this thing finalized out, but. I'd be willing to meet with anybody, but. Again, we have to be a little bit, there, there were a lot of citations in there and, and anytime we do that, I think we need to understand those a little better. So that we don't wind up tying his hands because there are emergencies that come up. And situations that aren't always as cut and dried as you might think. So. We just want to make sure we don't pass an ordinance where we get ourselves into a legal bind where we do something.
No, I, I, I agree 100% and we are more than willing to participate in any, uh, in any group or study group. I just wanted you to know that we also looked at your recommendation the last time. That we came to your committee or the town council, you asked about emergencies, we put that in. Dr. Lemay, uh, asked about, uh, giving people two weeks notice with a certified letter if the town was going to go. And do some trimming, so we made those changes. So, you know, we're happy to refine this. Uh, I hear Dr. Lemay loud and clear, get, provide a list of the trees that are recommended. It is, it is complicated because, you know, this is somewhat not cut and dry of what needs to be done. So. You know, we, we are very happy to, uh, be involved in further, uh, look, further look at this.
And Chris, do we need to limit how many council members are on a workshop or not?
So, well, the workshop is going to be public, so you just.
So we can just have a, schedule a Zoom meeting and?
Yep, we're not taking any action at it. Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
So, and, and I would also suggest too, that after those changes, we, we need to. Also pay in mind to in the, the proposed ordinance and ordinance form. And also decide what part of the code that's going to go in. So those were some of the original comments, but. Held off because of, um, the committee dealing with some more of the substance. So that's something else to keep in mind as we go forward as well.
Okay.
So just so I know, and when I go back to the committee, because we're going to have a meeting in January. We're going to hold off any work on this further, other than the list of trees, uh, until we have the workshop?
Yep, I think that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Okay. I think, uh, Mary Lou, we already, you already brought up the, uh, water and refuse bills, right?
Yes, we're working on it. Two letters have been sent out. We're researching the other one and then I'll have, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
And I haven't, we haven't heard back from them, but we only sent the letter out a week ago.
Yeah. Bill, public hearing.
Okay, can we, we, can we add one item to the, to the agenda? Uh, for new business, uh, because it's important because of the times, time schedule problem. With John Cochrane's assistance, uh, and Bob Lemay, I got a phone call. Today from, uh, Eric, the partner in Mishawaka for Baker Tilly. And he suggested that tomorrow is the deadline for, for the, uh, for the CARES Act submission. I had been told that the only thing we could submit for was for the sneeze shield that we had in front of Deanna's. Window and, uh, but, uh, Eric seems to think we can make a try. To get, uh, to get reimbursement. We had at the, at the beginning, some of you may remember. Somewhere around $37,000 was allotted to Long Beach. As part of the, the monies that were sent from the feds. Uh, and I think it was just designed based on the size of our community. And, uh, so what he suggested is if I provide the information on the. On salaries for, from March 1st to the present, which is obviously a lot more than $37,000. So what, what he has done is prepared for, for me, so it's.
Resilience salary for the police, police department, but Bill, right?
What's that?
It's the salaries for the police department.
Yes, sorry, salary, just salaries.
Not the total salary.
So it's the public safety, public safety officers, I'm sorry. And the, it's resolution 2008 that I, I want you to consider. A resolution to provide for reimbursement. Of public health and public safety payroll costs with CARES Act funding. So I would like to entertain somebody to make a motion. Basically what we will do is if this is passed. I will get this to, um, uh, to, we will get the, the thing notarized tomorrow and I'll get it into Eric's hand. To be sent to, uh, to the CARES Act, uh, council and see whether we can get, we can get some reimbursement.
I'll, I'll move that that resolution be passed.
Second.
Okay.
Can I, do we have a copy of it? We can peek at sharing screens or something, or is it anything that needs to be looked at, John, or is it?
Well, I can read it to you, but it's.
Yeah, you can read it to you. It's going to be around $37,000. That we can get if we can just submit this paperwork.
Okay, but you're, you're comfortable with the paperwork in, in terms of the submission?
Yeah, it's pretty much boilerplate. Wouldn't you say, Bob, you get a?
It just says.
I have not got a copy.
Let me, let me just read the first, the first paragraph. Whereas the town council of Long Beach Civil Town, Indiana. Is seeking reimbursement of public health and public safety payroll costs. As allowed through federal CARES Act funding, which has been re, received by Long Beach Civil Town from the Indiana Finance Authority. I mean, that's all we're asking for and I've provided an attachment of the, the salary. The rest of it is boilerplate. So. You know, we're not asking for, for any, uh, any body parts. We're just asking for, see if we can get some reimbursement. Uh, expenses.
And Bill, how do we get that? Do we take it down to the post office and send it certified or what?
No, I can, if, if it gets, when it gets notarized, I will, I will scan it and Eric says he will. Once he has a scanned copy with the notary on it, he will, he will send it in and see whether we can, we can receive that funding. The way he described it to me was that the, that, you know, they were, the state of Indiana received $300 million and they didn't. Distribute much of it. I mean, our $37,000 isn't nicked very much for a $235. Sneezes shield. So if there's, if that money is going to go away, what he's suggesting is we should at least try to get. Our $37,000 back.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta email this down there plus US mail overnight it too.
Yeah.
Two, two ways.
Yeah.
How to go down.
So you're okay with doing that?
Absolutely, I am.
Okay.
All right. So there's a resolution. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
One, one last point though. So are we asking for, did we, did we separate out? Some percentage of the police salaries and say that that's?
They just want to know what we've paid from November to now. And Bill's.
March, March 1.
From March, yeah, March 1st till now. And Bill's provided.
$25,000. So I think we got enough to, to justify a $37,000.
Right.
Reimbursement. We're calling those, those dollars specifically that we spent that money because of COVID. I mean, that's.
Because of public health and public safety.
Okay, I, okay. I mean, I see the county spending money on all kinds of crazy things, trying to make sure they get all their money and I get it. I just, I just wouldn't want them to come back and say, hey, you know. Did you really spend this on COVID? That, that's all my question is. It's, I'm not, I don't oppose it at all. I, as long as you've looked at it, John Coker, and you're comfortable that we're, we're doing the right thing.
It's as I understand it, it's what you paid out in payroll. During those last three months, since, since March, what we paid out in payroll.
We paid out a whole, we, we paid out a whole lot more than $37,000 in police.
That's all we, that's all we're entitled to.
But are, but can we, if, if somebody comes back and wants to know why that is related to COVID, we, do we have any backup? I think if we're going to submit.
Safety.
It doesn't necessarily have to be related to COVID.
No.
We've got nothing to lose by asking for.
Didn't the governor just recently expand? That you could do this. It didn't have to specifically state. What you spent each dime for on the COVID. Situation.
If you're comfortable with it, John, I'm good. I'm, I'm just playing the devil's advocate. I see a lot of money getting spent on things that weren't necessarily related to COVID. Like air conditioning systems and all kinds of crazy things at the county level. If you're comfortable with it, I'm fine.
Did Eric say what his cost for this would be?
Few hundred bucks.
He didn't, he did not, but he, he, you know, he said, this is only going to take, take me. Uh, you know, less than a half an hour to get the thing put together. I mean, he, he's doing this for other communities. So there's boilerplate. Uh, you know, it, it says ordinance slash resolution. So he said a resolution is fine, which only takes one, one reading.
All right. So we have a resolution. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. 2020 additional appropriations?
Do we have to authorize Bob to, to sign these documents, Bill? I think.
Uh, Bob, I, I, Bob will, Bob will get it signed. Yeah, we'll get it signed. Yeah, okay. So we'll have, we'll have it signed by Bob and, and, uh. There are two places for him to sign. We'll get it signed and we'll get it into the, into the system.
Did he sign it yet, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll.
I'm anticipating you guys making the right decision.
Yeah, I mean, I can always tear it up if you say no.
No, no.
I'll reply and notarize it.
Another public hearing. Bill?
Okay, the public hearing, uh, for the, for the public who is going to hear this. We, we need additional appropriation or because the, because. Budget in, in 2019 for 2020, we had no anticipation of the fact that we were going to get. A $797,000 award from INDOT. We hoped we would, but we had no, no way to budget for. So basically what we're doing is, is having a public hearing to add. 50,000 to, to rainy day fund. To authorize the $797,000 in the community crossing grant fund. To add $30,000 worth of expenditures to Riverboat. Add $30,000 worth of expenditures to CCIF. And to add a $190,000 expenditure to the SEDIC fund. So, and if we do not need to spend that money, none of that money will, none of that money will go away. So it, it's necessary for us to justify spending this money to pay for the, uh. For the paving. So do we have anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the, of the, uh, of the additional appropriation?
I do. I think it's a good idea to keep the town running.
Yes, I, I do also. Uh, anybody needs to speak in opposition to the, to the additional appropriations?
I see no one.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we. Or I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's done, Bill.
All right. Now we've got, now we've got the, the ordinance itself. So it's, it's ordinance. 2020 dash oh four. And it is the additional appropriation. So it's it's ordinance 2020 dash oh four, and it is the additional appropriation ordinance, whereas it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than it was originally appropriated in the annual budget. So that and and the you've all seen a copy of that of that ordinance. So I, we need a motion to to pass the ordinance on for or to to have a first reading.
And Dr. Lemay, just as a reminder, as always, takes unanimous of those present to consider it and to approve all at the same night, so.
Okay, so moved. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to suspend the usual rules. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous.
Now, the second reading of the additional appropriation ordinance 2020 oh four. Do I have a a motion to approve on second reading?
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good deal. We're moving along now.
Yeah.
Salary ranges.
Okay, the salary ranges, you know, it's an ordinance as we talked about. If you looked at the at this, we we haven't approved any any increases or decreases, but we are, but we need to have a salary ordinance for 2021. And so we're approving the ranges. And if you recall, the ranges are exactly as those that we approved in for for 2020. So we're just approving the same salary ranges for 2021. So do I
Make a motion to approve the salary ranges that we've all reviewed?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Wait, once again, this because this is an ordinance, you need to vote unanimously to consider all at once that procedure.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye. No, I'm sorry, a second to hear a second, John?
Second.
Hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Okay, so and then with that, and the reason that there are no salary increases at this point is we we are authorized, we have authorized, and we will look again at the new focus consulting agreement. They're going to give us a survey to see where our town salaries stack up against neighboring communities. And once we've had a take, taking a look at that, we can hopefully look at what we do in terms of this year's salaries. Okay, Lake Michigan Shoreland Preservation Overlay Zoning District Ordinance. That ordinance was passed a couple of years ago. It's been amended twice. So we have the original ordinance and two amendments. So John Wall, Chris and I looked those over, tried to consolidate them into one document. We've also had a change in the Army Corps' interpretation of the natural ordinary high watermark that we wanted to incorporate into the ordinance. This is a zoning ordinance. However, the town council can suggest this ordinance and send it to the Advisory Plan Commission, and the Advisory Plan Commission then can take it up. And I believe, Chris, they have 45 days. Is that right?
They ultimately have 60 days.
Sixty.
To consider, yep, and then to consider and and ultimately can come back. But at least this, I guess, starts the clock for them to consider, and that's the procedure in terms of getting the ball rolling one way or the other.
Okay, so did everybody get a chance to look at that document?
Mm hmm.
Anybody have any comments, any changes that they suggest?
I think I sent out a Word document with some suggested typo corrections and a few deletions and revisions. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that, my, that I sent out to y'all.
All right, did that come out today?
No, I sent it, when did I send it? It's been a while. I have to find, I I want to say it's been
I think you sent it on Friday, John.
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah.
So I guess I'd I'd like to just, some of those typos, I think, need to be fixed. And then I think there are a few deletions that are kind of important. I I don't know if we can pass it tonight unless I I can pop it up on share screen if you want, and we can pound through it.
Or we could send it out and all, we you've sent it out, I guess, you know, maybe, this is another one that's not terribly urgent, so maybe we should all review the changes you've made. I guess I didn't see those.
Well, and you're going to have a special meeting that's contemplated plus year end. So you have some ability to put put those.
So I guess maybe the reasonable thing to do is for us all to review your copy, John, your changes, see what we think of those, and then bring it back to that special meeting.
I think that's a great idea. And if you're having trouble with that, I tried to, I'm not a great word processor dude, but I I put the comments in there electronically. You you have to kind of hover over them and click them to see where the language gets highlighted. So if you if you're doing it on your computer, just make sure you you get to each comment and click it, and it'll show you the language that I'm suggesting that be removed was one color and suggested changes was another color. You'll see it in there. It's, again, it it's mostly just typo stuff with a few substantive changes. John, did you say you already looked through it or no?
I've seen, I've, well, I think it's the one you, I just got it this weekend.
Right. Chris, I think Chris sent out what was the last draft, and then we had done some of that stuff in a, in a works, you know, little work session together and trying to just dust it up and correct some errors. And I think we're pretty close to being done with it, but I I don't, I hate to have a bunch of language issues, you know, if we have, might as well get them cleaned up if we can.
And I can take John's suggested on these and maybe put it in a simpler form with without those comments. I'll highlight it, and as you guys can see from the versions, it's pretty labor intensive to try to color code from the different changes and then the current suggested ones. So maybe I can make it a little easier, and then we don't have all those flags.
That'd be great, Chris. I appreciate it. Okay.
The the flags have the justification for all of it. So if you want to take it a couple of minutes and look at the flags, and then Chris can clean it up based on those.
Okay, sounds good. Haas and Associates 2021 Consulting Rates. I think we all seen that. Do we need to approve those, Bill?
Yeah, then we, you know, I, we, all of the rates are exactly the same as as 2020 to 2021 rates, except they've added to the professional engineering one and professional engineering two, I think it's 130 and 140 an hour. Those are, those are added because I guess they didn't have that category before, but they haven't raised any of the rates, so there's no surprises. But but we like to have them, have it approved and it been signed by Dr. Lemay for the for 2021. So we need a motion, I guess, to
I make a motion to approve those rates?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cool. New Focus HR Consulting Agreement. This we all agreed to. However, I don't believe that we are in principle, but I don't believe we had the dollar figure. I've got the contract now and their fee for their agreement, where the compensation analysis was $16,000. Our HR committee thinks that that's a reasonable price, correct, Mary Lou?
I I didn't know it was $16,000, so I I really didn't
Okay, I guess I talked to Mike about it.
Okay, I didn't realize it was that much money.
Yeah, my chief. But, you know, we agreed to do this in principle, but now we have the dollar figures. I thought we ought to take a look at it again and just confirm the dollar figures, and that's what we want to spend. I'll make a motion to approve it. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now discussion. So basically, the idea of this is to look at this to figure out what we want to do in terms of our town employee salaries for the coming years.
Well, I do think, to be honest with you, we need to know where we where we are at. And we do, we do, there are some of us that believe there are some inequities. And so I think this will be a baseline and and for all future things, because then we can grow up from there. I just didn't realize it was going to be $16,000. But I do, I I think on some, we're very competitive, and others, I think there's some inequities. But this will confirm it. So it's not me saying, it's not, it's not me. So it's somebody that's objective.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. So I'll get that signed and get it to Bill. Police cars.
Getting to speak on that one. In the 2020 budget, I had put $85,000 in to replace the two 2013s that we currently have that are starting to nickel and dime us to death. Usually, we keep a car for seven years and turn it over. We've had these now for nine. So it's more than time to get it taken care of. Mark has contacted Bloomington Ford, which is the dealer that has the QPA state pricing for the squad cars. And he has five, or he did have five, I think he has four now left, 2020 models in stock for a reduced price. The base vehicle price is $40,615. The cost for us is 33,334, so which brings it to 66,669 for both of them. We have some money that would still be available out of that, around 18 grand, to buy equipment that needs to be purchased for the new vehicles, because they've changed body styles and some of the old equipment will not fit in the new cars. So we're kind of on a holding pattern with Bloomington Ford. And Marcus went ahead and got prices on the equipment for the new cars. So we're kind of on a hold till the council approves this expenditure.
Is this for 2020?
Right, 2020. Is that in their budget this year, Bill? And how much was budgeted and?
We we didn't budget specifically. We have, you know, basically, the way we budget is sometimes we have, we have capital expenditures that do not have, but that do not have an assigned cost. Like now, I think if we if we did a five-year financing on those two cars, the, you know, the the interest rates are still going to be in the low twos for 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 new for new vehicles.
Was that, that's what we're going to do then? Lease it, lease them for five years?
And I would
Didn't we have it in our budget to, wouldn't this be a capital improvement or purchase?
Well, we 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 did buy one car in 20, I guess it was, was it 2020? Or I guess it was 2020, wasn't it, Bob?
In 19 or 20.
And 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 the pandemic hit, and we spent the money, and we have not, we we own the car, we haven't financed it. So we actually don't have any cars that we have that we have purchased this week. We have that $20,000 a year for five years that we're going to be spending on the front end loader. But that's a $94,000 purchase. These would be, you know, much less than that. So I think it would
Well, what what do we have budgeted for this year for the police department to purchase cars? That's all I'm asking.
We have
Or purchase capital
We don't have anything identified. We have, we have $140,000 in capital expenditures budgeted for this year.
And what have we spent?
And we don't have, and we haven't identified what those capital expenditures are.
We haven't spent anything out of that. We still got 140,000. So that's all I'm trying to get us.
Yeah.
Is there money to buy these? That's all.
Yes.
Difficult.
It's a great buy. I think we ought to pull the trigger. I'd make a motion that we that we support that that buy at this point, because if we don't, we're going to lose it, and then we'll have to spend more on the newer models. Bob assured, Bob and Mark have assured us that those models are the ones that we need, they're adequate, and we're going to get the benefit of having that that model here that somebody else ordered that didn't pick up. So that it's kind of a unique opportunity that if we let it go, we're going to spend quite a bit more to get the equivalent cars in the future.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimous. Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department Agreement, I think we've already dealt with that, correct? And the fees for the body cam videos, I think we dealt with that also, right?
Mary, you're muted in case you had something.
Oh, I said the present contract was signed when I was on the council.
Yeah, with, yeah, and so we're we're working on that.
That we need to update it.
Yeah.
I'm not even, I'm not even going to say when that was, Mary, just
It's a long time ago.
Okay.
We need an end of the year meeting.
Okay. Got any proposals for dates, Bill?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm here, and so
An end of the year would be good, huh?
Do we usually do Mondays or no? I mean, do we?
Monday's work.
Do you want to do the 28th?
Could be the 28th, the 28th or the 29th is a Tuesday, whichever. Monday's fine.
I'm good.
What, I'm sorry, being a new kid on the block, what what is that? What is that exactly?
Well, what what we need to do, honest, we 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 just always have a meeting at the end of the year, because there's a bunch of checks that I have to write between today and the end of the year. And, you know, to have them all approved and not flop over into January is what we try to do. So that, so, I mean, we could throw in things like, you know, other ordinances to consider, but, you know, often the meeting is is very brief, because you've got a check register of those checks that I've written from 2015, I have from 1215 to 1228. And so that's that's basically what we're covering.
Well, he's just closing the books, John, so that's what we need to
Okay, so 12, Monday 1228?
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, good, okay. And
Schedule for them?
Seven PM.
Yep. I'll put that in the in the paper, so we've got, so we've got that agreed. Okay.
Okay.
One other thing for a new business is at the end of November, I sent John Wall an ordinance, or like a thing about fire pits, because we've had some residents who are concerned that ours really don't cover, that they should be covered. And as the fire department, you know, I think they're very proactive on what we should have. So I had a model one that Joy had given me from up in Michigan somewhere. So if if John, if you want to think about it for next year, maybe somebody from the fire department, if you want them to work with me. And then Chris Willoughby said he'd refine it for us so we could, so we could fix the ordinance to make sure people close their fire pits with the screens and then and within regulations.
Yeah, if I I look through the existing ordinance, Mary, it's pretty, it's pretty tight. There are, there's actually state code relative to open burning that we kind of wrote in on, basically, that our ordinance mimics that a lot of that language. I wouldn't mind tightening it up. I agree with you. If you if you want to sit down with it sometime in January, we can do that.
Let's do that, because I I I know that nobody's, I don't think they're going to be burning in January or February, but I think when we get the people back in in the spring, they need to realize what we're doing.
Good deal. Okay, public comments.
I have a comment. Bob, this is Joy Schmidt, 1607 Oaks Court. Just as a point of clarification, the SRF funding was approved in conjunction with the preliminary engineering report.
Okay.
Thanks, Joy.
Sure.
Mark Oldus.
Yes, good evening and Merry Christmas to everyone. I just want to circle back to the sewer on Lake Shore Drive at the
Could you get your name and address, please?
Sure. Mark Oldus, 2944 Lake Shore Drive.
Okay.
Thank you. At the initial meeting that was put on by Michigan City and Haas and Associates, they were fine, I think the city council was fine at the time, as long as the capital costs were paid and you had a working septic field, they were fine with you just paying the capital cost if you lived on the north side of Lake Shore Drive. And I was just wondering what has changed with that? And I do have a follow-up question after that.
I think the thought, Mark, was that one of the reasons we're putting in the sewer system is because we're concerned about our the sewer system is because we're concerned about, um, our septic systems leaching out into Lake Michigan. With that in mind, we thought it made more sense to go ahead and mandate that all the properties north of Lake Shore Drive hook up the sewer system and stop that potential source of pollution.
Okay, um, well, we're talking with the state, I reached out to the state, I also reached out to, uh, La Porte County, um, and, um, obviously Haz and Michigan City, uh, didn't have an issue with, uh, uh, working septic fields, they had, obviously had a problem with, uh, non-working septic fields, but I don't know if the board, we're talking with the, uh, representative from La Porte County, they do have an ordinance that they haven't enforced, but, uh, Haz also informed me of this, is if there's a public utility within a hundred feet of your property line, you are mandated to hook up to the public utility. So that's a game changer for everyone also on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, which means with the, with everyone on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, if La Porte County decides, much like the moratorium, to spring this on everyone in Long Beach, that's a game changer for everyone on the south side also of Lake Shore Drive. And the final point is, I understand with the new, uh, once we're on the, once we're under septic, uh, we get new garbage service, is that correct? We get, uh, we, Michigan City will pick up our garbage, is that-
No, they initially thought they had to, but I believe they revisited that and decided that they did not.
Okay, so we'll keep whoever we have, we'll keep Republic currently-
Yeah.
As our garbage haulers instead of having Michigan City, uh, on a different day, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, maybe Chris can, uh, talk to Haz about the La Porte ord- ordinance, because I think that's pretty, if, if they decide to enforce this, then everyone on Lake Shore Drive will have to hook up to the, uh, new, uh, sewer system.
Chris, can you check on that?
Uh, I'm already aware of the county ordinances and the state ordinances, if nothing has changed since our first public meetings on these, the, the state could always intervene and/or the, the Health Department through, by, on behalf of the county, so all, all of the authorities and who has say over such matters have been the same.
Okay, so, as far as you know, things haven't changed, and the only way it would change would be if the state decided, or if the county decided they were gonna mandate that, is that correct?
That's right, and they, they do not make it a practice, it's, it's something that we've mentioned in their, kind of the parallel ordinances, or, um, ordinances and/or state statutes depending on, um, who's, who, the enforcement mechanism, but it's different than what we included in our agreement with the sanitary district, because they are essentially the governing entity for sewers, but we have an agreement that they're not gonna make anybody hook up unless the town mandates, and the town could still mandate that everybody does as well. And, and we've mentioned at previous meetings as well of trying to get the county to put, uh, things in writing or, or otherwise commit one way or the other, and they're not going to do that, but it has not been their practice. Tony Menke used to talk about that at the first meeting we had at the community center, is that, that authority always exists, but as long as things are functioning, they have not made it, uh, their practice to do so.
Okay, any other public comments, raise your hand?
Janice Brown.
Yep.
Hi, uh, two-five-zero-nine Shorewood Drive, and I wanted to clarify, is there an ordinance for solar panels in Long Beach?
There is not.
There's not, okay, um, there are some great models of zoning ordinances that have been done, I had to research it in my former, uh, town for my alderman, and also I was on the board of a homeowners association, so I'll be glad to send you some of those, I learned a lot, one of the most important things was fire code, so, uh, that was, that was a really important thing in our subdivision that came up about how the installation went, so I'll be glad to share those documents, I can email them to you, Dr. Lemay.
That'd be great, uh, we have one in front of the APC, but I'd happy to look at what you have and see if there's anything we need to add to what we have.
Okay.
I know APC is gonna take it up, uh, at a meeting a week from tonight.
Okay, great.
Yeah, if you'll get a, take a look and see what we got.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, uh, second thing, um, I had previously sent an email about potential grants, FEMA, brick and FMA grants, uh, along the, at Lake Shore, and, uh, I wanted to, I've missed several meetings, I'm sorry I wasn't able to tune in, but I wanted to know if there's, um, any interest in those grants and how this, uh, town can utilize some of those, there are plenty of cities around the nation that are utilizing the brick grant for the, um, building infrastructure, basically, the federal government is shifting away from, um, remediation and going to investment, so.
Uh, Janice, I'll comment real briefly, I, I, I contacted the office for the Indiana State, the Department of Homeland Security that kind of spearheaded some of those grants, and the Ogden Dunes got on the bandwagon really early, and they were able to at least be in the running, but it's a year, year, possibly years-long process with a lot of engineering costs and some other things involved, so we kind of, that boat has sailed for us to do anything with what we're trying to accomplish right now, I think it'd be a great opportunity for, you know, somebody like yourself or anybody else that has some input to sit down with us and try to steer us in the right direction, but from what I understand, you, you just don't jump in at this rate, it's, it's, it's a long process with a lot of work.
It's, it's a little late now, the, the grants were, I think, announced in March or something, and they knew, you know, when the start time was, but I'll be glad to keep watching, things like stormwater utility, uh, sewer, there's, there's some also, uh, grants that, uh, so I'll be glad to volunteer my time to just send emails and-
That'd be great. Yeah, 'cause we are looking at searing the rest of the town at some point in the future, and maybe with that timeframe, that might work.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing that I see changes in the feds is that they're looking for innovation in solutions, and apparently South Bend has a great, uh, solution for moving to, uh, eliminating septic and going with sewer, so I'm trying to find out more information about that, uh, so that's right in our backyard.
Cool.
Could possibly help. And the federal government is also looking at regulating septic, or unregulating septic, I don't know how I should say that, but, uh, Florida has been getting a lot of grants to take septic out of their state, uh, so just something to keep on the radar.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thanks for all your help.
Super, thank you.
Uh, hi, Bob. Mary, Mary O'Neill, fifteen thirty, Lake Shore Drive.
Yep.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to Chief for all your many years of service, um, enjoy your retirement, I'm sure there's a honey-do list or something that you'll find to keep you out of trouble, and, um, just as an FYI, I don't know if it will affect any of the sewer work or not, but, um, being in the construction business and we're trying to buy American and all that, but steel prices, uh, just went up twelve percent for certain things this week, and they're saying it's gonna go up again, um, another twelve percent, so, um, hopefully that won't be, I don't know how that would affect the sewers, but it probably will, um, and hopefully it doesn't get saddled on the backs of everybody on, uh, the north side of Lake Shore Drive. Other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mary.
And, uh, stay healthy.
And Chief, you're planning on showing up the end of the year meeting, right?
I, I guess, yeah.
I want you to be there, okay. All right, any council comments? Claims approval, Bill?
Okay, check number one-seven-six-one-eight through one-seven-six-nine-three, totaling Salaries for November twenty-twenty were sixty-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Do I hear a second? I'll make it then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.